The following program is sponsored by The Greek. It is Radio Shack dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely. And brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, October 23rd, 2019.
This will be your first time.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'm excited. I'll talk to you. Say your name.
Yan.
Yan.
Okay. Nicole, you have any?
We're ready.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Wednesday, October 23rd, meeting of the County Commission. If you all please stand and join us in the first ten. Lori, watch your ears today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. As Mr. Norman will take the first minute of this meeting to meditate, pray, whatever you'd like to do, but it's a minute for you to just kind of do what you please. Okay, we'll open the meeting first thing. If you have a cell phone, please turn it off. And the first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment this morning on anything that you'd like to speak to the County Commission? Anyone got public comment? George?
Yeah. Turn on the phone down.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, there's a serious design flaw on the east end of the Ingress Egress on Avenue D. The road does not meet minimum widths and a concrete triangle has been installed. They're on the road even more. Each lane may be 10 to 12 feet wide. People are running over the curb now. They're going to be painted black. When it snows and covers the triangle, you're going to have a terrible hazard with terrible results. You need a new building inspector and engineer. You've got to look at these flaws. Also, in keeping with your agenda item 2B-1A, you not selecting engineering firm that screwed up that ingress egress on Avenue D accessing Highway 93 near the new Holiday Inn. I have the same concern for your agenda item 2B-3G. You have professionals, you better start doing your job. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 4C, you're to consider donating county-owned property assessment parcel numbers 002-01, excuse me, 002-161-05 through 08 on Park Avenue between 15th Street East and 16th Street, 15th Street East in Ely to win and be routed hospital so they can build housing for the resident program and their employees. You should not do that. You're competing against the private sector. Your building inspector strangulating me and my family by not allowing us to, as well as others in this community, to develop their property. If these lots are part of, or all of the ones I had offered to buy from you folks earlier when you had it up for bid and no offers, I caution you about discrimination. Remember, you sold a 40-acre parcel, which was appraised for $45,000, to Sweetheart for $4,000. I offered to buy those lots for cash. You refused. Now you're going to give it away and then compete against the private sector? Cannot have it both ways, Mr. Commissioner. Same with the rest of you folks. You're discriminating. You're supposed to be encouraging the private sector, not hindering that. I've yet to receive an answer from the Commission as to whether you have to sign this non-discrimination clause when receiving federal loans or grants, Mr. Chairman. On how long do I have to wait? Mr. Chairman, on your item B-1B, in light of the negative impacts that vaping is causing nationwide, I find it interesting that the city gives a business license to a vaping outfit between two schools. I'm not saying don't let him in. I'm just saying use some common sense. There isn't a day that I don't watch the news that they bring out more bad news about that. Mr. Chairman, on your item 2A-2, you're looking at possibly giving those parcels away to the county for residential, the hospital, excuse me, for residential housing? Again, you're competing against the private sector. You're discriminating against ethnic minorities, women and veterans. We had a woman that was doing RVs and trailers. She had to go to court, spend $19,000, lost half her business, and yet now you're giving it away? Why don't you let the private sector take care of the problem? I want to remind you-
That's right. That's right, Mr. George. You've got the signal.
I've got more.
I know you do.
How about my brother?
No, you're not your brother. So, thank you for your comments. Do we have public comment for me?
You know, this thing has got to change, Mr. Chairman. How can a community come in and talk to you about certain items when you cut them off for three minutes?
Yeah, well, that's the public comment, that's the history. So, you'll be hearing about those items-
Well, time to change history.
You can speak up during those items on the agenda. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Anyone got any public comment? I'll ask one more time. Public comment? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll proceed with meeting. Page two, item 1A, 9:15. I guess we don't have time for that.
Let's pass, let's give Burton.
Okay, let's give Burton. I go to page three, item 1A, to tell your elected officials, and it's Burton Hilton, the assessor, discussion for possible action, approval to promote Stephanie Baptist to Appraiser 2th grade 126, from Appraiser 1, page 125, effective 10/28/19.
Burton? Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Appreciate it. That caught me off guard a little bit, too. So, I'm here to get the Commission's approval to promote Stephanie from the Appraiser 1 position to be Appraiser 2. I put in the back of the job description for Appraiser 2 her state partner taxation licenses for real personal, for real property appraiser, personal property appraiser, all her continuing education, associate's degree that she's got. She's been working in this job and she does an amazing job for the past couple of years doing these job descriptions, but wanted to just wait until we got, she got her continuing education done. It's a lot of time that she spent on that. This, I did ask for this during the budget process. It was approved by the Commission. And if you have any questions, I'll have to answer them.
Congratulations on all the work you've done. You've done a good job.
It's been a huge asset. Where, as I've talked about, we're so understaffed in our office, but we wear the badge of honor too, but I can't do it without good people. We can't. And Stephanie is a great employee. I'm very, very lucky to have her associate county.
Yes, we are. Okay, anybody got, anybody got their commission or any to add to this? If not, we'll for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Travis, a second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Passionate unanimous? Item B, discussion for possible action, approval to close state route 490 for five hours on May 15th and 16th, 2020, and on September 18th and 19th, 2020, for the shootout challenge, also under bunny. Any question by anybody? If not, I'll for a motion to approve. Motion by Ian?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Passionate unanimous? Item C?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Walker would like to be here for this. He's going to be here later.
Who's Mr. Walker? Would you talk about it? Okay. We'll go to the, we'll go to the, this is the minutes from the following County Commission meetings, special joint, October 9th, 2019, and the regular October 9th, 2019 meeting. Anybody got any questions, corrections, or additions?
Under the special joint meeting, stated in there that H. Global or Lucy Baker, which he doesn't live in Baker, so you can just say, just, you know, he wants to live in Baker's meeting, I forget. I'm sorry. No? What page is that? I'm sorry, it's the first.
What's his name? Bodler lives in North Spring Valley?
Yep. Says he live, okay, but down for it, says that he wants to remain happy to live in his home in Baker.
Oh, okay.
And I'm looking for that.
I see, but the end of that paragraph.
And he doesn't live in Baker.
Okay.
Just he lives in North Spring. Oh, there it is. At the very first paragraph on page one.
All right.
At the end of it there. To enjoy his home for as long as possible. Just stuff it around.
Are there any other additions, subtractions, or corrections? Hearing none, I'll for a motion to approve. Both minutes, we can do it both at once. Download overnight. Special joint meeting and the regular meeting in October. Mr. Chairman, I approve, or move to approve this, Amanda.
Second.
Motion by Shane, a second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Passionate unanimous? Okay, we are now at 9:15. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Page two, item A, 9:15, as the Road Commission is here. Good morning. One, a discussion update on primary and secondary roads within White Pine County's cooperation and governmental agencies. Bill Callwood, Public Works Director.
Road maintenance activities between September 16th and October 10th. Road maintenance in the U-Grift, Ruby Valley, Preston Dump Road, Mondiva, Club 50, Ten Wheel Lake, Gibson Road, First West Lund, Perdano Ranch, Lake Valley, Burris Well, and Brother Temple. On Perdano Road, we've replaced two culverts. During the year, we just keep a work order system, kind of like we do at maintenance, so when we notice culverts that are out, we just put them on this, and that's where we've been doing it the last, the last couple months, just starting to replace those. We swept Ruth and vacuumed out all the DI boxes. I believe there was an issue that come up in the joint commission meeting with Ruth about some dropped inlet boxes on Sunshine Street. We went and all those are repaired and in good working order, new concrete pour around them, and they're ready to go.
Thanks, Bill.
I bet you. We've mixed 600 tons of salt sand and open in the snow, or, I don't know if, I don't know if I should say hoping it's snow.
Case.
We completed the installation of the stop signs, and this, we used the recommendation that myself and Scott brought before you. Those are all done. And McGill, we've added some delineators, we're starting to mark the culverts and the lawn areas, specifically on the Gibson Road. And for the assistance agreement, White, the city of Ely owes White Pine County 74.5 hours. Any questions on road maintenance? Anyone?
How's that car down on the road coming? Is it, it took a hell of a beating last year. Is it, is it?
It's in good shape right now.
It's back in shape?
We have moved out of the lawn area, and we've got everything wrapped up in that area. We'll go back to Springs. We, I don't know if you recall, but we have some projects, some soil stabilization projects, and I believe a chip drop in that, but for the most part, that was, the road in that area are in good shape.
Excellent. Okay, that was an update. Thanks, Bill. We'll go to item two. Item two is discussion of possible action, approval to award a bid for the new tandem axle truck, truck tractor with fifth wheel. Bill?
I attached the invitation to bid, and also attached the bids as we receive them. All three of the people that bid, they met the specs that were required, so my recommendation is going with the low bid of Velocity Truck Centers of $137,616.
Can you tell me what the other two vehicles?
The other two? They're all pretty close. Silver State, Silver State is 137, 904, and then, and Peterbilt was 143, 120.
Okay, just that was close.
Yeah, one and two was real close.
Okay. I remember, right? The last truck we bought was Western Star.
Yeah, so I, we were pleased that we, it's nice for the mechanics that you can kind of standardize that fleet for parts and diagnostic tools, and so we're super happy that we made them that way.
So, I've received a pretty good input on the, from the operators, that those are nice trucks, so.
They are. They're a lot of truck.
Okay, I'll for a motion based on Bill's information. Should we, oh, move to bid?
Move to approve? Second.
Motion by Shane, a second by Ian. All those in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
I'll put the item ahead just for public information. Put the name and the amount.
Okay, my motion will reflect.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, not a problem, that we're awarding the bid to Velocity Truck Centers, the amount 137,616 for the Western Star, 4,900 S P.
Okay, that's the motion. I mean, just like, oh, I'll, I'm having a second. Motion by Shane, amended motion by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Passionate unanimous? Item three, discussion for possible action, approval to close car street between 8th and 10th Streets from 6:00 PM until 11:30 PM on July 2nd, in there, 2020.
That's it?
I'll probably abstain from this one because I don't want to take it to Bill, and it's for the all-class reunion, so I'm going to abstain from that vote. Is that right, Bill?
No, it's mine.
Okay.
All move to approve?
I'll second.
Motion by Ian, a second by Lori. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four in favor, one abstaining, Richard abstains.
Thank you.
And we got one more. The approval of the minutes from September 25th, 2019, on Road Commission meetings.
I'll be abstaining since I was, wasn't here.
Okay. Any additions, corrections, or subtractions?
Motion to approve?
Hearing? Motion by Lori, second. Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Passionate unanimous? Item three, discussion for possible action, approval to close car street between 8th and 10th Streets from 6:00 PM until 11:30 PM on July 2nd, in there, 2020.
That's it?
I'll probably abstain from this one because I don't want to take it to Bill, and it's for the all-class reunion, so I'm going to abstain from that vote. Is that right, Bill?
No, it's mine.
Okay.
All move to approve?
I'll second.
Motion by Ian, a second by Lori. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four in favor, one abstaining, Richard abstains.
Thank you.
And we got one more. The approval of the minutes from September 25th, 2019, on Road Commission meetings.
I'll be abstaining since I was, wasn't here.
Okay. Any additions, corrections, or subtractions?
Motion to approve?
Hearing? Motion by Lori, second. Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passionate unanimous? Get out of us with the abstention from Travis. He wasn't here. Okay. Now, we're back to the-
I have another question for the-
We've already done item 1A, so we're going to be on page three. Item two, Michael legal district attorney approval over request or proposals for the sale and/or development of county-owned property known as approximately 1.934 acres of land located at point 108 northeast of the eastern terminus of Avenue M and 127 east of the eastern terminus of Park Avenue, White Pine County, Nevada, further identified as assessor's parcel number 002-271-13, for the purpose of constructing residential housing to address the county's housing shortage. Mike?
Thank you. This is the first step in the process, those lots down on the side of the, of Ely that we own, to try to entice development to come in. So, we are simply, pretty much just asking for concepts or ideas and plans that these developers enter contracts to come in and present to the Commission, and then you would have the opportunity to kind of vet and see if their delivery system works for the community. But this is just a first step. Doesn't bind us to anything other than sending out requests for proposals.
Any questions by any of the commissioners? Anyone? Okay, then, this is a possible action, so I'll motion to approve the request.
Move to approve?
Motion by Travis, second. Second by Ian. Any further discussion?
Question?
Nope. We can't do it.
You told me you could.
During public comment at the end of the meeting.
You better-
This isn't a public hearing, this is just the first, this is just the first reading. Looking to see if we can go forward, so there will be a public hearing, right, Mike?
Yeah, but you, if you don't recognize George, you don't recognize anyone during this meeting until public comment, and that's the way it's run. And that's okay. But if you recognize George, you have to recognize him every time he asked to recognize.
Okay.
So, I would recommend not recognizing him at this time and giving him a lot of opportunity during public comment.
Okay, I'll take your advice. Okay, so we, we'll, we have a motion by Travis?
Yeah.
And a second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passionate unanimous?
I do have a quick question, though. Do we know the value of the property?
We, we did get an appraisal back, didn't we?
Yes.
It was about-
Because I didn't see anything in the backup. Do you?
No, I don't have the, Burton has the appraisal, I had to get it from him. Richard, what was it? Did it come in at?
I think it was $7,400.
For the whole thing, right?
Ridiculous.
Wow.
And it's an appraisal that probably should be thrown out, in my opinion, but it was just a crazy propos, a crazy appraisal, as far as I'm concerned. That's my opinion, because it's a prime residential area, it's come out, it's got utilities going to-
Two acres and-
Yeah, $7,400? I mean, come on, we just got done talking about parcel for $10.
Well, this is, this is exactly why we're doing this, because if we can put some value in it by promoting the subdivision and development, you know, it could raise the value of the properties down there.
Okay, thank you.
And you have the opportunity to see what kind of projects come in, you know, and homeowners in the area have the opportunity to come in and question and give their voices to what-
No, this is a good first step. I agree.
Okay, we had a motion, a second, and now, we did both?
Yeah, we did both.
Yeah, first one. Yeah, okay, that was it. All right, item B, as under Mike, also a discussion for possible action, the approval to go forward with the, or opt out of the negotiation class for ongoing opioid lawsuits created by a recent decision in the federal court.
So, might have seen on the news lately, there's going to be a settlement with some of the opioid manufacturers, and pretty much every county in every state is automatically opted into this class action type lawsuit, and we will likely receive a settlement by doing nothing, just sitting here, don't take any action, and eventually sometime, there might be a settlement check cut to the county. Per, and the way that is based is per capita, per resident, so the city would be able to receive a settlement for their residents, and the county would be able to receive a settlement for their residents, and it's, right now it's estimated to be about $3.60 per resident. You run the math on that, it comes out to, for the county, about $18,000.
Where would that money be distributed to? Do you have an idea?
The Commission could decide what to do with it. I'd recommend putting it back in the public health, you know, that's where the cost comes from, for the community. But, so here's the thing, the city, you know, also would be able to receive their cut for their 5,000 residents roughly, you know. With, there could be, and I think there is, going to be some state litigation against opioid manufacturers here within Nevada. Naco and some individuals from AG's office are putting this together. If we don't opt out of federal litigation and we take our settlement, we are barred from suing these same companies again in state court. The advantage of suing them in state court is there's a higher likelihood of a larger settlement to cover the costs of our damages of the toll that the opioid epidemic has had on our community. For example, we could do nothing and receive $18,000, or up to $20,000, maybe 40 at the most, or we can stay, risk it a little bit and, and maybe take the longer road over the next couple of years in state litigation and reach a different settlement with these companies and receive a larger settlement, or receive a larger chunk, because $20,000 really isn't, I don't think it's significant. I think we should stay in, we've had, we can talk to our doctor about the costs on our system. I can tell you right now, law enforcement probably incurs $20,000 a year in costs for opioid overdoses and other crimes and costs, and the healthcare system is burdened by it, and of course, the families, and, I mean, we've had a lot of overdoses and we have a lot of sickness because of it, so. And they, so I would recommend, it's, it's a little risky, but I would recommend that you consider opting out of the federal lawsuit and staying, and then pushing, given DA's office direction, to dig in deep and find out where we're at with the state lawsuit and join that.
Playing devil's advocate, what do you think the participation in the state lawsuit would cost the county? Do you have any ideas?
Well, no, because I think Clark County and Washoe County are probably going to be putting the most money into the suit because they have the most recover. And they're going to be recovering probably millions, where we would recover thousands. We would just join our name to that lawsuit and support them and counsel them in a decision to sign up for pleadings, like the, like the Sage Grass litigation and other statewide litigation. We probably wouldn't incur much cost unless they ask us to cover something. It would be probably, if they did ask us to cover something, it would be, it would be de minimis, I would imagine.
Like a pair of some.
Yeah, and the other problem is, we're supposed, we have to opt out by November 22nd, so if you don't take the vote now, I'm going to have to put it back on in November again. But I also have to communicate that to the, through the federal system also. That could take some time.
Okay, so just to make it clear, before we ask for the vote, the recommendation by DA's office, recommendation not etched in stone, is that we opt out.
Yes, or you do nothing today, and we'll receive some sort of settlement check.
Can, can we come back to this? We have a 10 o'clock with, where item four on B, it says opioid and other controlled substances in White Pine County. We've got to ask a few questions then.
Sure. This is just some time, we can take this item again at the end of the meeting.
So, I wouldn't mind hearing about it. I probably know what I'm going to do, but I would like to feel a little bit more confident.
Like I said, the, at most, we're risking, we're risking the $20,000 to $30,000 settlement.
Yeah.
And at best, we could be, I don't know, I think we probably are entitled to over $100,000 or $200,000 or more, just for our county, and that's nothing compared to what our costs are.
Okay.
Somebody think about, I'm, I'm not just trying to make up numbers, but-
Well, Lori, Lori kind of wants, and I got no problem with that.
It doesn't matter.
She wants to hear more.
No, I, I agree, I think we'll just, just wait till after we have that discussion, then come back to this item before the day's done. I'm fine with that.
So, this could have been an attorney-client privileged communication in deciding our, whether to go forward and what to do. However, you know, our, I think this is open enough and it's public enough with the settlements to let the public have an opportunity to hear and ask questions about it as well.
Okay, just listening to, to Mr. Bobby and Carson, we're going to go ahead and just read this, and then we'll, listen to Dr. Bian, and then we'll come back.
Sure.
We'll reopen during his item. I'll reopen this item? Is that what I'm going to do?
Yep.
Okay, so, item B is just going to be at wait till after we hear from Dr. Bian. Let's move on to item C, discussion for possible action, the approval of resolution 2019-54, requesting Nevada Attorney General prosecute a case due to a professional conflict
Yes, or you do nothing today, and we'll receive some sort of settlement check.
Can, can we come back to this? We have a 10 o'clock with, where item four on B, it says opioid and other controlled substances in White Pine County. I'm gonna ask a few questions then.
Sure. This is just some time, we can take this item again beyond the meeting.
So, I wouldn't mind hearing about it. I probably know what I'm gonna do, but I would like, feel a little bit more confident.
Like I said, at most we're risking, we're risking the 20 to $30,000 settlement.
Yeah.
And at best, we could be, I don't know, I think we probably earn titles over $100,000 or $200,000 or more, just for our county, and that's nothing compared to what our costs are.
Okay.
Somebody think about, I'm, I'm not just trying to make up numbers, but...
Well, Lori, Lori kinda wants, and I got no problem with that.
She wants to hear more.
No, I, I agree, I think we'll just, just wait till after we have that discussion, then come back to this item for the day, then I'm fine with that.
So, this could have been an attorney-client privileged communication in deciding our, whether to go forward and what to do, however, you know, I think this is open enough and it's public enough with the settlements to let the public have an opportunity to hear and ask questions about it as well.
Okay, just listening to, to Mr. Vibe and Carson, we're gonna go ahead and just read this, and then we'll listen to Dr. Vibe, and then we'll come back.
Sure.
We'll reopen during his item, I'll reopen in this item, is that what I'm gonna do?
Yep.
Okay, so, item B is just gonna be at wait till after we hear from Dr. Vibe. Let's move on to item C, discussion for possible action, the approval of resolution 2019-54, requesting Nevada Attorney General prosecute a case due to a professional conflict within the District Attorney's Office.
All right, and now...
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt real quick, just, I am aware of some aspects of this case, and I have some personal history with some of the folks involved, so I'll be abstaining from any discussion here.
Okay.
Every once in a while, something comes up where we, it's just would be unprofessional and, or unethical in a lot of cases, like this case, to prosecute the case ourselves, so, the process is to ask the AG to take care of these cases. They require a resolution from the board, asking them for their assistance, and they usually only charge us if it's a very serious felony, category B felony or above, and that's not the case here.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's normal procedure, so I'll go for a motion to approve the resolution to allow the Attorney General Office to prosecute the case.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Lori, a second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Four in favor, none opposed, Shane abstains. Okay, we're moving on. Bill, we'll move on to Nicole, on same page three, item 3A, discussion for possible action, the approval to accept the offer to become a cooperative agency in the process to prepare an environmental assessment titled targeted and perspect, prescriptive grazing and, of annual grasses in the Great Basin ecosystem in Nevada by the BLM. Mr. Chairman?
I'll be abstaining from this, I don't know what the implications are, but I'll just abstain if you say.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Yes, the BLM sent an invitation, asking for the county to become a cooperative agency in preparing the environmental assessment, specifically regarding grazing grasses in